For September 12th, 2016. To lead us in the pledge, I'd like to invite our Eagle Scout from Troop 321, Ben, is it Maderman? Maderman? Please come up and lead us in the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to item three, changes to the order of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the order of the agenda?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the council to continue item nine A, which is the elected official's code of conduct and ethics. I got a call late this afternoon from the city treasurer asking to work with staff to make a few revisions to some of the sections covering him. There's no time sensitivity to this issue, so I told him I'd suggest to the council that we just continue that item tonight so that staff can meet with him.
Okay, sounds good. Any objection? Are there any other changes to the order of the agenda? All right. Item four, report from closed session, Mr. Ribbons.
There's no reportable item from the closed session in the special meeting.
Thank you very much. Item five A, council communications and announcements. Maybe we will start with Matt.
Thank you. Just two items. One is that I was walking around on Sunday, I believe it was, yeah, I was going from the library back home, and I got to the corner here at San Carlos Avenue and, what are we, on Elm Street here? And there was a lady with a sanding block, very carefully sanding and cleaning up the utility box, and I thought, that's pretty amazing. I knew we were gonna do art. I didn't know the artists were going to, you know, be so careful in their preparations of the surface, which, I mean, I did some painting, you know, when I was in high school. I know the biggest part of the job is preparation. So it was beautiful to see that, and I talked to her for a little while, and she's very excited about her artwork, and so I just thought I would share that. And then the second item I wanted to, a little more serious, is when the fire took place at Recology, I received on my phone, which is, I call it a Gibbs phone, it's a, you know, old-fashioned flip phone. All I received was a thing that said, I think it said MSS or something, and then how many kilobytes that message was, because Mr. Malpe, no, there's no criticism of Mr. Malpe, but he sent it through a, some type of software program that sends it in that format, and if you have an iPhone, you're fine, but if you have a flip phone like mine, all you get is this garbled message. And so I wrote Jeff, I texted him back and said, I can't read it, and then he did send me an email. But the reason I raise the issue is I think it does bring about the question of communications to council members and how that, what the protocol is and how that takes place, and the equipment we have. I know we have, you know, iPads that come from the city. And it's something that, the reason I'm raising it is because I think it's something that we could bring back as an agenda item to discuss, and we might look at some other means of communication. I, walking in, Mr. Hoffman told me that he had left me a message on my city voicemail, which I rarely check anymore because the city manager hardly uses it. And I just wonder if that is an antiquated system and we shouldn't be updating how we communicate as council members, both with the public and especially in emergency situations with the city manager.
So Matt, maybe I can make a suggestion. I think it's a good topic. We have a mini-retreat coming up in a month or so. Maybe we could have some discussion among us at that time. Would that be good?
Yeah, I think, I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay. Okay, anything else?
Nothing, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of comments that Crystal's gonna put up here. But before I actually get through those, I wanted to ask my colleagues to see, I think it was at our last meeting that we expanded the number of appearances funded by the city for, at the farmer's market. And after thinking about it since that meeting, I actually would like to participate in a little bit more, too. So I'd like to ask that we make that open to everybody who's interested. I'm not saying we compel people who don't want to go to participate, but I want to see if that's acceptable to my colleagues, because I certainly would like to do it. There may be somebody else who would as well.
I think it's a great idea. You know, I mean, I was out there, this weekend, we didn't have a city booth, but I mean, I think, you know, the farmer's market is becoming kind of the epicenter of sort of social life on a Sunday morning. I think it's good to have elected officials out there talking to people. So I, I mean, I would love to have as many council members as want to participate, and I think the staff time to help set up the booth and run the booth is pretty negligible, so.
Yeah, that was my sense from talking to Jeff after the meeting. Great, good, thank you. So I have several comments tonight, or comments on several different topics, which if I actually can figure out there, whoops. There we go. First one actually is, I want to talk about sidewalk repair costs. It's something that my colleagues know that I've talked about several times already. There is a petition that I've made available on change.org. It has unfortunately a fairly lengthy URL, but you can see it here. "San Carlos City Council Stand Up Against Unfair Sidewalk Repair Costs." If you can spell all that correctly, you can find there, but you can also get it through a Google search. And what I'd like to do is encourage members of the community who, like me, feel this is an issue that the council ought to take up, to sign on to the petition, and I'll report back on the results of that at a future meeting. So that was the first item. Second one, we've all seen in the news that the West Bay sanitary district has essentially put our sanitary sewer system at risk. And what I mean by that is the major pipeline that consolidates all the sewage from quite a few homes on its way out to the sewage treatment plant, the reconstruction of which has been scheduled for a long time is now delayed because basically West Bay vetoed the moving forward with the project. That's a really big concern for me, and I think for a lot of other people's concerns as well. I was somewhat taken aback by the comments that were at least quoted in the press that the West Bay organization had made. You know, statements like, "It needs to be done, we just have an honest opinion on the speed," of how fast it should be done. And all we have to think about is our own ratepayers. And interestingly, in none of the articles and in none of the comments that I've been able to dig up, does anybody at West Bay dispute the fact that the delay that they're causing is going to increase the cost of the project, which ultimately is going to increase the sewer charges for every single business and resident in all of the affected communities, including San Carlos. And as John Seibert from Redwood City pointed out, this is a sleeping giant. This is a really bad problem. If that line goes, and it's not necessarily in very good shape, we're gonna end up pumping lots of sewage into the bay, and that will be a very, very bad thing, both financially and environmentally. It's not enough to think about just your own ratepayers. What West Bay is doing on behalf of its community members, who I mostly suspect don't know that they've done this, is putting everybody around us at risk. And I would ask that they remember that they are all part of a larger community, and we really want to avoid damaging the bay, which is in fact something that all the experts that have looked into this say is a significant risk. That's why we're spending all the money to repair it. So what can we do? Well, as individuals, what we can do is make sure that everybody that is served by this system, and particularly in the West Bay service area, which as I mentioned is Menlo Park, Atherton, parts of Atherton, parts of East Palo Alto, and parts of Woodside, that it's a concern for us, and that they should speak up and speak out against it. I think as a council, we ought to organize an opposition to this amongst our fellow council members. I know Warren Lieberman from Belmont has spoken out strongly against this, and I think it's time for us to stand up in public and say that, hey, look, we really need to get something done here. And then I also would like to know, and this, Greg, is a question for you, I'd like to know, is there a way that we can hold West Bay financially responsible if during the course of this delay, some disaster strikes that would have been avoided if the line had been replaced? And even if that doesn't happen, which I hope it does not, it is going to increase costs, because construction costs go nowhere but up. And I don't see why the San Carlos ratepayers should have to pay for the fact that the West Bay sanitary district doesn't want to move forward with the project. So I'd like to understand whether we can do something. That's the end of that topic. My last one that I want to talk about is something near and dear to my heart, something I've worked on outside of the council for a while, and that's to do something about trying to increase the protection for people in San Carlos, protecting them from gun violence. There is a proposition coming up before state voters this fall, Proposition 63. It takes some common sense steps, some small steps, but some common sense steps to try and reduce the risk of mass violence. And I know that the council traditionally does not take positions on state measures, but I really think this one we ought to. And the reason I think we ought to is because if recent history has taught us nothing, it's taught us that mass shootings and mass violence with guns can take place anywhere, anytime, including in a place like San Carlos. And that makes it a local public health and safety issue. So I actually hope that there's support in the dais to agendize this as an item for discussion that we can take a position on. Thanks.
Thank you, Mark. So are you asking specifically to agendize conversation about Prop 63?
Yes, I am.
Okay. And so what would be the, could you outline a little bit more detail what you'd be asking for and proposing? Are you asking us to, for the city council to endorse the measure, or you're asking for the city council to learn about the measure, or are you...
I am asking for the city council to endorse the measure, because that's what I'd like to do. I suppose if somebody wants to suggest that we oppose it, they're welcome to do so, but what I want to do is endorse it.
Okay. Have, do we know, have other cities, this is a first for me, have other cities either taken a position on ballot measures? Have we ever taken a position on ballot measures? We're all personally, you know, welcome to endorse measures, but I just want to know if this is something the city has done. Would we be setting a new precedent here? Are we wading into California election politics, et cetera?
As far as I know, we have on a very limited basis done this before. Proposition, I believe, one A was endorsed by the city council that had, that directly impacted municipal finances in the state of California and the state's ability to take money from cities and whatnot. And there might have been one or two other measures similar to that, yet going back even further.
And legislation.
And we do with legislation frequently, but not, it's pretty infrequent, yet we have done it on statewide propositions.
Thank you. Well, I can say, you know, I certainly agree with the sentiment, and I personally have signed my name to the petition for Prop 63. I just don't know about the precedent setting, but I wanted to see what do my colleagues think? Do you want to agendize having discussion of this ballot measure and potentially endorsing it?
I think it's a slippery slope. The one that Jeff mentioned directly affected how we do business and how, you know, we get financed through the state and so forth for things. But this, to me, is an issue that just would invite us to get involved in everything that ended up on the ballot at some point, and I don't want to see that happen at the city council level, because I think when you get into issues like that, it opens up too much of an opportunity to divide the council. We're nonpartisan here, and we don't get involved in state and federal issues. We're not the city of Berkeley. And, you know, there's enough things that come up for us that do cause occasionally where the council is divided to a point, and I don't mean divided like just voting differently, but I mean divided and walking out of the room mad at each other. And, you know, that's happened, but that's the kind of thing that I think could come about as a disease, if you will, with bringing these kind of issues to the dais.
Ron, Bob?
Jeff, that must have been before my time. Matt seems to remember it, but in 11 years, I don't remember ever voting on a state issue. It could have been right before.
Could have been right before, it was around that timeframe, yeah. Might have been 2002 or 2003.
Yeah, because since 2005, well, December 2005, it hasn't happened. I personally, as Cameron, I haven't signed the petition, but I would, I would sign it as a person. But I have to agree with my colleague. I think we just, the slippery slope is what I would use the term. I just think we need to tread very carefully, because as important as this is, and it's a very important issue, next week there might be another important issue for one of us that might happen. It's just, it's just something that I think we should, personally, I think it's something we can speak about, but I don't, I don't believe that we should be, we should be commenting on the, on the state or federal items as a council.
Okay. Thanks, Bob. Ron, did you have anything you want to say?
Excuse me, yes. I've proposed some things that I thought the council should take a position on in prior years that really fell in sort of under the same category, and we didn't, and I supported that. This time I feel differently. I'm a strong believer in the Second Amendment, but I believe in the first four words, and this is the first time in 27 years, if my numbers are right, that this, the residents of this state, the voters of this state will have a chance to vote on probably one of the most important issues out there. I realize the state's already taken some action on it, but this particular proposition would, would add some things to that. It's really about gun safety in my mind. It's not about taking anybody's guns away. So I realize that Mark and I are in the minority, but I do believe that since any city anywhere in this country is, is vulnerable to gun violence, whether it be a school or a home, I would like to see us take a position and endorse it, so. And I'm gonna be, I've already endorsed the measure, I've already given money to it. So even if it's not supported by the council, I'll be supporting it on my own.
Okay. Thanks, Ron. So I, I think it's a tough issue, but I side with Bob and Matt on this. I think we, there are lots of different ways in which the city can either enact its own ordinances or suggest changes at the legislative level, and I'm happy to look at those and pursue those from a, on this particular topic, which I think is a very important topic. But I am concerned about, you know, having the city actively weighed into the ballot proposition process, so.
Mr. Mayor, may I make last observation?
Sure.
Thank you. I understand the concerns about precedent. I guess what I would remind my colleagues of is that anything and everything that we do sets a precedent. And in fact, by, based on what Jeff said, that in fact the council did in the past take up the, an issue which involved the financing of the city, the finances of the city, and took a position on it, and not taking up this one, not at least considering it. What we're basically setting is a precedent is, we'll do things for money, but we won't do things for public safety. And quite frankly, you know, I wouldn't, you know, I would dissuade my friends and neighbors who will come to this conclusion, but there's a phrase that, that runs through my mind about this, "It looks like we do things for filthy lucre and not for what's right." And so I just would ask people to remember that.
Okay. Thank you, Mark. I want to go back to the previous topic that you raised, which was about the sanitary sewer system in West Bay, and I want to say my personal thanks to Bob, who's served on Silicon Valley Clean Water for his leadership and his advocacy on this particularly important issue. I don't know if, Bob, you wanted to sort of continue the conversation on that?
Sure. I appreciate the council over brought it up. I was gonna do it, but he brought it up first, which is fine. We're basically talking about a 63-inch pipe that could cost $400 million, and it's the, should we say, the linchpin of the whole project that we're doing down there, replacing the entire sanitary sewer, stormwater, whatever you want to call it, project where it handles the cities of Belmont, San Carlos, Redwood City, and West Bay, which covers, as you mentioned, Portola Valley, East Palo Alto, Atherton, and Menlo Park. I've reached out to some of my colleagues already, trying to get them interested in this on the councils, and also I'm gonna reach out to our state legislators, because I'm concerned that West Bay has, should we say, a permanent veto on any major project. This is the first time in 10 years that they've utilized it, but it's very short-sighted, and it's gonna, as my colleague mentioned, it's gonna be more expensive. We've estimated it could be upwards of $40 to $50 million additional cost, plus we might not be able to qualify for state funds that are much, at much lower rates in borrowing, which might cost another 40 or 50. And so the outside independent consultant, it wasn't done in-house, we hired an independent consultant to do this, came up with approximately $85 to $90 million additional for this delay until next April. I cannot figure out, as Mr. Olbert said, where they get, where they get these numbers. I have no concept of where West Bay comes out figuring that it's gonna be cheaper in the long run. So I concur with his comments about possibly checking with our city attorney and also mentioning to other, our colleagues, not mentioning, but getting our colleagues to understand in the other cities that it's gonna cost money, and also to go to the state to see if there's something we can do to fix the joint powers agreement, which right now is just really one-sided in a minority way.
Thank you, Bob. Okay. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things. I attended a local policymakers group, which is the task force on the Caltrain electrification, and I just wanted to sort of give everybody a little bit of an update on it. It's, the project, the electrification project, which goes from San Francisco downtown station to Dirdon, is well on its way. In the next year or two, you're gonna see some infrastructure going up, catenaries, poles, wires, that sort of thing. The, the work's supposed to be done by the end of the year on tunnel modifications. Some of the new trains are gonna be a little bit taller, so they've been having to notch the tunnels. If you've ever taken a train up to the city, you'll notice, you'll know that you go through four tunnels, so some of those, all of those tunnels had to be changed a bit to accommodate the new trains. That work is about 65% done. The, the real infrastructure work begins next year. By 2020, they're gonna be testing the system, and the hope is that first passenger service will be 2021. So that's a little over five years away, little under five years away, actually. The next thing, I just wanted to let, just comment on the fact that I went to the Symphony at Sunset. Mark Olbert went, and Cameron went. I don't know if I didn't see Matt or Bob there, I think they had other commitments. But I did want to comment that it was really delightful, and being that the Beatles were the first rock group I ever really liked, the entire symphony was all Beatles music. So anyway, my hats off to the San Carlos Parks and Rec Foundation, and a special thanks to Martha Girdlestone for letting me sit at her table. And it was really just a wonderful, pleasant evening and a great use of our, our beautiful new stage there at Burton Park. And the last thing I wanted to mention is I went to Council of Cities Dinner a couple weeks ago. We had, Cameron and I both went, and we had fire chiefs from Milbrae, San Mateo, police chiefs, I'm sorry, did I say fire chiefs? I meant police chiefs from Milbrae, San Bruno, help me out here, Milbrae.
San Mateo.
San Mateo, yeah.
I think there might have been one.
Chief Mannheimer was there, Menlo Park was also there. And we got a great report on police services. And we in this county, really indeed the Bay Area, are really lucky in spite of all of the issues and problems that have been happening around the country. We're fortunate in the Bay Area that we have really professional police organizations. I also spent the weekend up at Tahoe, going to a friend's wedding, and one of the people I was with was a former police officer, now works for Oakland PD. And I will tell you that the challenges that they have are overwhelming, and it's, and they need all the support that they can get. And they have a good, a good mayor is doing a good job, and despite their issues, they still have less problems than other areas of the country. So anyway, it was a very valuable evening to listen to them. I think we're in good hands next time you see an officer. They have the toughest job in the world, just say thank you. I mean, who else has to wear bulletproof vest? So, that's it.
Thank you, Ron. So I have a few slides that I wanted to share. The first is that Mark and I serve on something called the Two Plus Two Committee, which is made up of two school board members and two city council members. We talk about topics of mutual interest. We had a very interesting presentation from the San Mateo Office of Education about the preschool shortage in San Carlos and really across the entire county. This has hit us hard over the last couple of years because of the closing of Edison Montessori, which had about 100 students, and that's had to been absorbed sort of by the larger system. So you can see on this graph kind of the shortfall in terms of the demand and how many actually classroom spots are available for ages, you know, two to four. So the county had put together, you know, there's, there's actually a couple of former Edison Montessori parents who've been, who has been, brought this to a lot of our attention. Mark mentioned this, I think a number of us have met with them in the past. The county office of education said that they were finalizing a study that they would have done in November. Jeff, are we planning to bring that on the agenda? Have we talked about doing that, or do we need, what's that? We have not talked about doing it?
We've not talked, I mean, you just talked about it at the Two Plus Two meeting, but the council hasn't.
Okay, great. Well, I wanted to see if there was interest from my colleagues about having a presentation about preschool in San Carlos, and some of the recommendations that are being made countywide and nationwide about things that cities can do to help potentially alleviate this problem.
Yes, sure.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So I think, hopefully we can get them scheduled for sometime after that report is done in November. I attended a CCG meeting last week. The main topic of conversation was a plan that, CCG is the City and County Association of Governments for San Mateo County. They perform a lot of different functions, but one of their main functions is that they are the congestion management agency for the county, meaning they're supposed to help coordinate transportation planning to alleviate traffic congestion. This is a problem I'm very concerned about, and traffic seems to be getting worse year after year. They're working on something called the 2040 Countywide Transportation Plan, which is gonna come back to the CCG board for approval in a couple of months. I put a URL up here if you want to check out the plan. I have to say that I've been, I was pretty critical of the first draft of the plan at last week's meeting. I'd encourage my colleagues, if this is something that you're interested in, you know, take a read of the plan and reach out, and then this is the, the closest public meeting to San Carlos is gonna be in Menlo Park on September 29th. But I would say that the plan certainly doesn't foresee lessening of traffic, and in fact, you know, the plan sort of explicitly states that traffic's gonna get a lot, a lot worse over the next couple of decades, which is, you know, is unfortunate, and I, what I'm asking the staff and the people who are putting together these plans is to at least look at, well, what, what kind of scenarios would we have to go through if we were gonna significantly reduce traffic so that we can have an honest conversation about this? I want to give you an update about Peninsula Clean Energy. I serve on both the board and the executive committee. The executive committee met this morning. So Peninsula Clean Energy is gonna start rolling out in October. It's gonna roll out in a couple of waves. For those of you who don't know, the context here is that the county's been putting together a program. All 20 cities and the county agreed to participate. It allows them to pool electricity demand in the county, purchase cleaner energy on the market, and deliver it over PG&E's infrastructure for a lower rate. So you get cleaner energy at a cheaper price. Everyone is automatically opted in, and you have an option to opt out if you don't want to go with cleaner energy at a cheaper rate. The law requires Peninsula Clean Energy to send out four notices. We're actually gonna send out five, two of which have been mailed. This program's gonna roll out in waves. The first wave starts in October, and the map that I put up on the screen represents the homes and businesses in San Carlos which are included in the first wave. So far, the opt-out rate has been one-half of 1%, which is really good news, and so we'll see how we go from here. Like Ron, I wanted to thank Martha for letting me sit at your table at the, at the Symphony at Sunset. Mark, or Ron explained to me who the Beatles were, so that was nice. Just kidding. That's blasphemy in the sound, I know. No, it was a great evening. It was a great use of public facility, great organization raising money for our parks. I think Ron said it well. I had an opportunity to participate with the Chamber of Commerce in a ribbon-cutting for a new business called King's Camps and Fitness on Industrial Road. They're sort of a boot camp, CrossFit-style fitness center. They have a particular niche in doing a lot of business for public safety officers who have to qualify for their physical fitness exams, so they have all these obstacle courses in there. It was very fun, great group. I did not climb the climbing wall. I had an opportunity, on the topic of gun control, I had an opportunity to participate with, with Mark and with some elected officials from around the region, and Jackie Speer, our Congresswoman, at a sort of symbolic sit-in at a Universalist Unitarian Church in San Mateo a couple of weeks ago. It was, it was a packed house, and the discussion was about, you know, calling for a national ban on assault weapons and background checks at gun shows and for internet sales. And I think Mark stated it well, you know, this is a huge, important public safety issue. You know, for us, public safety is our number one concern, and it's an issue that requires a lot of federal and... a lot of federal and state intervention, so I was happy to participate. The San Carlos History Museum had an ice cream social, which my son was very happy about. He got some chocolate ice cream and a picture of a fire truck. But for those of you who don't know, the San Carlos History Museum is on Laurel Street, 533 Laurel Street, in the historic old fire building. It's open on Saturdays from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. There's a website here. It's staffed by local volunteers who call themselves the San Carlos Villagers. Ron's wife is, is one of them. They do a great job. I encourage folks who don't know about the San Carlos History Museum to go check it out. It's a great, it's a great, great museum. Lastly, I, with my daughter starting kindergarten, I've signed up to be a crossing guard, and it was actually a good eye-opening experience to get out there and get involved in morning traffic. You know, I'm proud that we helped expand the crossing guard program this past year. We jointly funded it with the school district, and we added a couple more intersections. But we had, you know, one woman run a stop sign right in front of us, right into the middle of the intersection. We had two people come to a stop, but then blow right past crossing guards that were holding signs saying stop. So, I just, I hope, you know, for anybody who's watching, listening, it's, it's a really important time, those fifteen minutes in the morning when kids are trying to get to school, so I encourage you to, to slow down and wait. If anybody wants to be a crossing guard, there's lots of volunteer availability. The schools are still looking for more people to step up and to participate. Okay, that was a mouthful. So, that's all I have for this evening?
Cameron?
Yes, sir.
If I may, because I see where you are in this picture, this is something that I have brought to the attention in the past to the city manager, and that is that the stop sign at this particular location, because of the, there's kind of an angle or something going on with that intersection where, by the time you get to the, the stopping line, the stop sign is like behind you. And so, I can see why people on occasion may blow through there, not intentionally, but because by the time they get to the intersection, the stop sign is behind them, and they, they miss it. And I do think it's something that Public Works would do well to take a look at.
All right. I see Mr. Walter noting that comment.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Matt. All right, we will move on to item 5B, staff comments on city administrative business. Mr. Mulpey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. As you're aware, last week, we had a four-alarm fire at the recycling center across the freeway from us. The result of that fire was there were no injuries. There was no structural damage to the building. It was really within some of the machinery. I've learned since then that fires are actually fairly frequent. Just that one was a fairly significant one. We actually had another fire out there this morning, a much smaller fire. The result right now is that portions of the center are going to be closed for four to six months. There'll be no public tours during that time. They're looking at kind of taking their public outreach tour on the road for the school kids that attend. Recycling material, they have agreements with other recycling centers to take our material and ship it out there for processing. Both fires are under investigation, but the initial, initial report is that they were likely caused by materials that, maybe chemical materials that had combined, that had been sort of improperly thrown away by, by people. There won't be any impact to residential recycling or garbage pickup, so that'll all continue as it's regularly scheduled during that time. And then sadly, while nobody was hurt during the fire, as a result of the plant shutting down for the four to six months while repairs are underway, about fifty line workers who worked the facility are, are going to be out of work during that time. So, that, you know, it's a high cost for them and their families, but the facility will be repaired and brought back online.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, we will move on now to item six, a presentation of a proclamation to Ben Maderman from Boy Scout Troop 531 upon receiving his Eagle Scout Award. Ben, could you come on up? I'm going to come around. And it says, "Whereas the Boy Scouts play a vital force in the lives of hundreds of boys and young men in the city of San Carlos who are guided by adult volunteers and who have given generously of their time and talents, and whereas the special and unique honor of achieving the highest award bestowed by the Boy Scouts was earned by Ben Maderman of Troop 321 for beautifying White Oaks Elementary School, which entailed constructing a new bench, planting drought-resistant plants, and repairing a wood fence, now therefore be it resolved that I, Cameron Johnson, Mayor of San Carlos, hereby congratulate Ben Maderman for becoming an Eagle Scout and commend him from, for his service and accomplishments as a member of the Boy Scouts of America. Congratulations." All right, congratulations. Would you tell us a little bit about your project?
For my Eagle project, it was over at White Oaks School. There's, before the project, the bench had nails sticking out, and it was like termite-infested with lots of dead plants. So, we put in new boards on the bench so that it was safe and standard, and then inside the bench, we put in California-native drought-resistant plants, which are doing well, to my knowledge, right now. And then across the way, there was a fence that was missing boards, which we filled in. And I was, I was just really glad to make, make, because I went to White Oaks School, I was really glad to make the place where I spent a lot of my childhood look nicer for other kids to come.
Excellent. And what, can I ask you, what was the hardest thing, and what did you learn from this project?
The hardest thing was probably when we were digging in the, in the dirt, we, someone broke a piping for part of the sprinkler, and I was a little hectic trying to find out how to fix it and stuff. Luckily, we got that done. And what did I learn from it? Definitely a lot of leadership, because I hadn't led a project like this before, and I was leading a group of about eight scouts, as well as a couple adults, so.
That's great. Well, thank you, Ben. It looks like a great project. Again, congratulations on your achievement, and we thank you for your contribution to our community.
Thank you.
Item seven, public comment for items not on the agenda. I have a number of speaker cards. Our first speaker tonight is Ken Castle, followed by Thomas Meyer. Good evening, Ken.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here tonight to speak about the inform San Carlos section of the city website, and about how it has been used by an unknown complainer to generate demands for sidewalk repair from the Public Works Department. The city has sent letters to hundreds of homeowners telling them that they have liability for tripping issues, and that they must assume the entire cost of repairs. City inspectors have sprayed our sidewalks in White Oaks with bright orange paint, many cases on small cracks that would never pose a tripping hazard to anyone. Astounding thing about all this is that an internet troll seems to have hijacked Public Works to act as his or her enforcer, and is using the anonymous online service request application to do so. Although the city may know the identity of this person, the rest of us have no idea what the motivation is for what could easily be a million dollars' worth of repair notices so far. To give you an idea, a troll is, according to the Anti-Troll Alliance, a person who posts a deliberately provocative or abusive message to a news group or message board with the intention of causing maximum disruption and argument. These people get off on other people's pain and distress. Amazingly, the sidewalk complainer has been given more courtesy than the homeowners whose properties have been targeted. No conversations have occurred with residents before their sidewalks were marked with graffiti. We think it's time to stop this activity and its abuses of the website. So, I'd recommend the following. First, the city should enact a 50-50 sharing plan on sidewalk repair, as is in the case of Redwood City in Burlingame, and as Councilman Olbert is proposing in his online petition. And it should do so on an orderly street-by-street basis. Second, the policy should have more exceptions involving sidewalk damage that is caused by situations not under the control of the homeowner. Third, the city should immediately eliminate the anonymous aspect of inform San Carlos. This is not a police tipster site, and our homeowners are not suspects in crimes. Fourth, the city should issue a written apology to every homeowner who has been fingered by this anonymous individual, and it should pay half of any repair costs that homeowners have been intimidated into doing thus far from these complaints. We didn't start this debate. The city staff did so by opening Pandora's Box. I urge the council to confront this matter and do the right thing. Amend city policies accordingly, and start treating our residents with the respect they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Our next speaker is, excuse me, please, no applause. Our next speaker is Thomas Meyer, followed by Jennifer DeGrand. Good evening.
Good evening, council members and the public. My name's Tom Meyer. I grew up in this city since 1959. I know who the Beatles are. I was a recipient of the city Public Works Department coming to my house. I was home at the time, and when I went outside, orange paint, it looked like there was a crime scene in front of my house. The markings were very visible. When I tried to figure out who did this, I was aware that there was a policy in the city that they were going to start tagging, is the term I would rather use in marking. They were going to start tagging based on anonymous, and that was the word that was given by Anthony Riddell, the Public Works Inspector, is that an online database to anonymously make sidewalk requests. My suggestion, number one, is that rather than call this anonymous, let's call it confidential. Let's kind of take the anonymous part out of it, and if somebody makes a report, they should be responsible for explaining what the issue is that they have. I think also using orange paint is extremely juvenile. You can use lumber crayon. You can use very simple markings with pretty obvious where the cracks are on the sidewalk. There's one thing I've learned in forty-five years of construction. Concrete gets hard, and it cracks. And I know this, the sidewalks in the city, particularly in the White Oaks area, are probably over seventy-five years old. I'm just guessing, but that's, they're, most of them are due for repair, anyway. Another thing I suggest is that maybe a tag be left with the homeowner, explaining what the markings mean. Instead of a month later or so getting a report that there's been a complaint, and I'm due to fix it, and here are my choices. I could do it on my own, or I can engage the city in some sort of collaborative effort to get it repaired. The city paved our street as part of an infrastructure expense. What is the city's plan to replace the sidewalks? There doesn't seem to be any. It seems to be solely on the homeowner. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Jennifer DeGrand, followed by Ryan Connolly. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer DeGrande, and for the last fourteen years, I've lived on the 2000 block of Cedar Street with my family. For fourteen years, our street has flooded with each rainstorm. For fourteen years, the PG&E pole in the sidewalk in front of our house has leaned. For fourteen years, the cement surrounding the leaning PG&E pole has been raised, presenting a significant tripping hazard. And for fourteen years, the city of San Carlos and PG&E has ignored our requests to have this leaning pole replaced and the sidewalk repaired. Until now, until an anonymous cyberbully has compelled the city to take action, to take action to charge my family with sidewalk repairs directly caused by a leaning PG&E pole on a street which perpetually floods. This is not only an unreasonable request, given that the neighboring cities do not pass these costs a hundred percent onto its residents, it's a complete misuse of city resources to respond to anonymous cyberbully without any logical or rational cause for public safety. Furthermore, I question why a city where I pay a heavy burden of property taxes would rather put public safety aside for fourteen years in favor of supporting PG&E, who frankly has been known to not really have much regard for public safety.
Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Ryan Connolly, followed by Laura Zapkin. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for providing us the opportunity to speak. I've been fortunate to be a San Carlos resident now for just over four years, and my family and I were very, very fortunate to move into what we like to think of as a heritage home here in, in San Carlos, and spent a tremendous amount of time making sure that the home is, is beautiful. In fact, when we first moved into the home, all of our neighbors demanded that we didn't do anything to it, and God forbid, tear it down. And so, we're, we're holding them to that, that promise. I was very, very concerned when I came home one day to see meters' worth of my sidewalk marked in bright orange paint. We had seen plenty of instances throughout the city where single dots of sidewalk panels were painted, and now what we're seeing throughout our fine community is an embarrassment. Literally graffiti tagging, identifying these so-called, so-called trip hazards. And in fact, we, we reached out to the city council and received a email back from just Sidewalk Maintenance@cityofsancarlos.org, saying that in fact, the orange paint is temporary, and that would soon wear off, but that the repairs wouldn't be made by the city for twelve to eighteen months. And we've seen plenty of instances throughout the city, especially in our neighborhood of White Oaks, where this orange paint has faded over time. So, it's not identifying any trip hazards for more than three to six months until the rains come and wash it out. So, I'd like to just propose that, two things. One, a methodical undertaking takes place to analyze block by block the sidewalks that need to be repaired. As a homeowner, I'm more than happy to make our sidewalks look beautiful, but let's share the burden. Let's look at this again from a methodical standpoint, and replace it in the order that it's needed, rather than this haphazard internet troll-based accounting. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Our next speaker is Laura Zapkin, followed by John Hoffman. Good evening.
Hi, good evening. It's Laura Zapke, and I'm just going to echo a lot of the comments that you've already heard with regards to the sidewalk issue in White Oaks. I would like to add, again, similar to the folks that you've already heard. I walked out one day, and I saw my sidewalk, and I'm on a corner lot littered with bright orange paint. What I found especially disturbing was this is the second time in almost less than two years that my property's been marked. And what was even more interesting is it was marked in the same spots that supposedly repairs had been done almost two years ago. Again, I find it very frustrating, being a homeowner here since the end of 2004. Like some of the others, I pay my very fine share of property taxes, but again, I kind of argue why I should bear the full burden of the sidewalk repairs when I have people regularly parking in front of my property on the sidewalk with their cars, their business cars. And it's very frustrating to me that I'm, again, having to bear the full brunt of that financial burden. So, I'd ask for the council's help and consideration, and perhaps sharing the burden a little bit, just like you do with the street repairs. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments. Our next speaker is our former councilman, John Hoffman. Good evening, John.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm not going to talk about sidewalks. This will be my third presentation on the subject of term limits. I believe that a two-term limit is appropriate for the council. The council has required that of all commissioners and anybody below the council level that is involved with the city. So, I think it- So I think it's appropriate that the council apply that to themselves as well. We can take the example of the President of the United States. The people have voted to amend the Constitution after Franklin Delano Roosevelt served part of a fourth term. We can also look to the state of California. The voters of California decided that term limits were appropriate for their representatives, and I think it's high time that the council apply the rules they apply to others, they apply to themselves. I think it's very easy and straightforward. The city attorney has said that it does not require a measure on the ballot, that the council can simply do this on their own, and I would ask that, number one, you put it on the agenda for discussion and public comment, and, number two, that you act on it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. The last speaker card that I have tonight is from our friend from the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce, Kathy Lavezza. Good evening, Kathy.
Good evening. As Cameron said, I'm Kathy Lavezza, and I'm here tonight representing the San Carlos Chamber of Commerce. The chamber's been providing monthly updates to the city council, and that's what I'm here to do tonight. I'm going to talk a little bit about some past activities and some activities that you can mark your calendars for. The year-round Sunday, San Carlos Farmer's Market's been up and running for 15 weeks already, and we feel that the change from Thursday to Sunday has been very successful in terms of the attendance and the increased business activity for the majority of our downtown merchants. The Windy Hill Property Ventures received unanimous support from the board, Chamber's Board of Directors, for their Meridian 25 Office Development Project. On August 18th, the San Carlos Chamber participated and co-hosted the Multi-Chamber Business Expo, which was held in South San Francisco. There were over 100 businesses in attendance from the county, and there were over 250 attendees. Last Friday, the 9th, the Chamber hosted Access San Carlos, and we had the League of Women Voters give a presentation on the 17 propositions on the November ballot. And I ask you now to take out your pens and mark your calendars. September 14th, we're having our Art and Wine Fair Preview Party, and that's going to be at Domenico Winery from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. On the 23rd, we're doing a ribbon cutting and a grand opening at Expedia Cruise Ship Center at 864 Laurel Street at 5:30 p.m. As you know, and many of you attend on a weekly basis, we have our San Carlos Farmer's Market every Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on Laurel Street. October 7th, we're having our Business and Government Roundtable at the library, and our guest speaker's going to be Assemblyman Kevin Mullen. And October 8th and 9th, our signature event, the San Carlos Art and Wine Festival Fair, excuse me, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. in downtown San Carlos. So I hope to see all of you at some of these upcoming events, and as you could see, the chamber's been very busy in the community, and we appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. I have no other speaker cards. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay. Matt, I see your light is on. Did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, just since we had so many speakers on the sidewalk issue, I know we don't take action, but you had mentioned earlier on the mini-retreat we have coming up, and perhaps we could put this on the list as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Very good.
Okay. Thank you to our speakers. We will move on to item eight, approval of the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless members of the council, staff, or public request specific items to be removed for separate action. Would anyone like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have moved that we approve of consent calendar items A through H.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grootkot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. All right. We will move on to item nine, new business. We have two -- we polled item A. We have items B and C. We note that Martha Gerlstone is here this evening, and so I'd like to ask that we take item C first. Does anyone have an objection to that? All right. We will move forward then with consideration of memorializing Walter Howard Gerlstone. And do we have a presentation? Okay. I have the clicker. There you go. Good evening, Ms. Peterson.
Good evening, council. My name is Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager. Before you this evening for your consideration is a tribute to Howard Gerlstone and after his passing, which occurred in July. At the last council meeting, council indicated a desire to pay tribute to Mr. Gerlstone in some manner. And with that, I'll move into the presentation just a little bit about what the reason I'm sure the council wanted to memorialize him in some manner, and that's because of his contributions to the community. He was a kind and helpful landlord to many businesses in our downtown area, having owned a number of buildings in that area. He was also supportive of local and civic improvement projects such as the stage and water feature at Burton Park, the kitchen remodel at the Boys and Girls Club, new buildings for Eaton Hills and San Carlos 4-H Club, and the replica of the Wright Flyer of the Hiller Aviation Museum, just to name a few. He was also a board member of the San Carlos Parks and Recreation Foundation, the Youth and Family Enrichment Services, and the Sequoia Hospital Foundation. So some possible tribute options that staff discussed amongst itself, which in fact I discussed with Martha Gerlstone as well as Lester, were the following: naming of the plaza at Wheeler Development, which was preferred by the Gerlstone family, and naming the parking garage at that same development, possibly renaming a city park such as Crestview, Vista, North Crestview, or Highlands, or naming a room at a city facility such as the community rooms at the library. And with that, open for discussion.
Thank you, Tara. Martha, did you want to say anything this evening? Can I -- I'd like to invite you to come on up.
Howard's widow, Martha Gerlstone, those of you who don't know me. Howard did all of his business in San Carlos in the downtown area. That was his baby. He was very careful as a landlord who would be one of his 26 tenants. He wanted the city to be diverse. He turned down, I can't tell you how many people in the 16 years that I was married to him, including a fortune teller on Laurel Street, one of the oyster bars. He felt that we had enough restaurants in San Carlos, and he didn't want this to turn into another Mountain View. So in all the years since I've known and been married to Howard, he's been very thoughtful about who is going to be in our downtown area. He wanted it to maintain the quality that it has always had. And so therefore, that is why of these choices that you see up here, we feel that the plaza at Wheeler would be the best source since all of his life's savings and his life's interests, and I must say, our income came from the downtown area of San Carlos. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions, comments, discussion from my colleagues? Let me go to there. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say that, based on staff's presentation and particularly Martha's commentary, it seems to me like the option of going with the plaza, naming it after Howard, would be something that he would really have appreciated, and I certainly would support that, and I'm not sure how we make that happen, but I'm sure we can.
Thanks, Mark. Matt?
Well, I'd just like to say two things. The first is to jump on with Mark to be in agreement with Ms. Gerlstone in naming the plaza. The second is, I didn't say much the night that we closed in his memory because I knew this was coming up, and I wanted to save my comments for that time. And I simply want to say this. Bob always likes it when I go back into history books, but when our country was being created, Benjamin Franklin noted some things, and he said basically, I'm paraphrasing, of course, but he said basically that there's two directions we can go as a country because we're offering the people so much liberty. And that is that when it comes to business, people could allow greed and avarice to drive them, or people who are in business could give back to their community and use some of their profit and their income and so forth to help their community. When I think of what Benjamin Franklin said, I think of Howard Gerlstone as the ultimate example of what Benjamin Franklin was talking about. And so I just want to honor Howard's memory with those words.
Thank you, Matt. Ron?
Thanks, Cameron. Yeah, I agree with Matt and Mark. I think the Wheeler Plaza is a great way to honor Howard. I had the privilege of having a lot of lunches with him as part of the Tuesday Lunch Bunch, which I was invited to join just a few years ago, and the more I got to know him and learn about him, the more I respected him. I didn't really know a lot about him. I knew he was a landowner in town. I knew that a lot of the businesses on Laurel Street, he owned and then he rented out. But I was always appreciative of the fact that he had a conscience, and he helped shape the way the downtown is. And I think we'll be forever grateful to him. He probably owned a lot of buildings when I was a kid that I didn't know about until later in life, so I think this is a great way to honor him and thank him and thank the family for your involvement in our community.
Thanks, Ron. Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I met Howard 11 years ago when I ran for city council. I didn't know who he was, but he apparently knew who I was, and he supported me in my first race for city council, supported me in my second race, and my third race. He didn't always like the way I voted sometimes, and he let me hear about it, but he always was direct, and he was always fair in his comments, and I appreciated any counsel that I ever received from him because I knew that he was coming from the right place, as my colleagues have said before. So I mentioned, I talked about it a little bit at the last meeting, and I don't want to belabor it, but we lost a great man in Howard, and certainly want to remember him by certainly supporting the naming of the plaza for him.
Thanks, Bob, and I will echo what all of my comments, all of my colleagues have said in their comments. I had an opportunity to meet Howard on a couple of occasions, didn't know him very well, but he was always very kind to me. And for somebody who had such a big presence in the town, it was very unassuming when I met him. You know, he exemplifies both the sort of giving back to the community spirit that we have in our town with all of his donations that have had a huge impact on so many people's lives, and then, you know, I think as Martha said, you know, just being a great steward of the downtown and watching the downtown, from what I have heard from, you know, many people who've lived here many decades longer than I have, has come a tremendous way over the last couple of decades, and I know that's to Howard's hard work and, you know, being very judicious about which tenants he chose to support. So I think, you know, the reason you memorialize somebody is to pay tribute to them, but also to show everyone else in town who are the examples that you want to hold up, and I can't think of anyone better. So I'll just ask procedurally if there's anyone else who would wish to speak on public comment on this item. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve memorializing Walter Howard Gerlstone by naming the plaza at Wheeler Development after him.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grootkot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
Mayor Johnson?
Yes. Okay. Martha, thank you for being here tonight and our condolences. All right. We will move forward with item eight or 9B, consideration of appointments to the city council ad hoc Single Family Development Standards Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you and your fellow colleagues on the dais are aware, from time to time, city staff makes a suggestion of forming an ad hoc committee of the council to help us with a specific project or policy creation that the council has directed staff to look at. In this case, the council's asked staff to look at the single-family home standards here in San Carlos, which we've begun to do. We do have some questions, however, about process that we'd like to bring back to the council for discussion in the future, but we thought it would be helpful to get a subcommittee together to work with us a little bit to hammer out some of those procedural issues about how we proceed with this issue. As council's well aware, you know, changing standards about folks' single-family homes now and in the future is a very sensitive subject, and we'd like to be very respectful and inclusive in how we handle this in our community, and thought it would be a nice addition to have a subcommittee help staff sort of put all this together. It's really not going to have much of an effect on the overall policy outcome. There's a very legal process for handling that, or it's going to have to go through the planning commission and ultimately the city council. So the city council will touch this the same number of times, but helping get it set up, we'd benefit from the assistance of a subcommittee.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Ron, did you have a question?
No, I just wanted to volunteer to be on the ad hoc committee.
Okay. Mark, did you have a question?
Yes. Yes, I did, although I suppose I should also say I'd be interested in serving on it as well. The question I guess I have, Jeff, is, I was thinking about it after you and I talked about it this afternoon. Can you refresh my memory when we were gearing up for the effort that eventually became the attempt to try and issue bonds to purchase the Black Mountain property? Did we have a subcommittee that worked on that ahead of time?
I believe we did, yes.
Yes, we did, okay. I guess it's, you know, my quandary just is, I thought we were reasonably clear about what we were looking to do when we tasked staff to follow up on this a month or a couple of months ago. If there are more questions, then I guess maybe we weren't as clear, or I wasn't as clear as I should have been, so that's part of the reason I'm willing to volunteer. But I'd mostly just like to see us get started with the process.
That sounds good. Is, sorry, is there a question? Or Jeff, are you?
No, he answered that question.
He answered your question, okay. All right. Bob, did you want to make a motion?
I want to make a motion.
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Hearing none?
I move to appoint councilmembers Obert and Collins to the ad hoc Single Family Development Standards Committee.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, Crystal, please call the roll.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grisilli?
Yes.
Councilmember Grootkot?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Johnson?
Yes. And with that, at 8:10, we are adjourned.
Well, since I got a lot of emails and talked to a lot of people about it, I thought I should be on. I am interested in it. I want to get it right. So Cameron?
Is there?